Good evening. It is 6:00 PM and I hereby call this workshop session of the Lewisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum, and we're going to go ahead and move right into discussion of the regular agenda items and consent agenda items. Council, if you wouldn't mind looking at your packets, we'll move through these. Item D, consent agenda. Item one. If there's any comments or questions on these. Item two. Or any of the consent agenda items we want to pull. Item three. Item four. Item six. Item seven.
Yeah, one quick question. What is a non-reimbursable item? I'm not sure I saw it in the packet.
Interstate projects, utility relocation for interstate projects is considered 100% reimbursable. However, it's a little bit of a misnomer in the fact that there are some items that TaxDOT never reimburses for.
Even though we're doing it for them?
Well, we're required to move our utilities for TaxDOT. If this were not an interstate project, the city would have to foot the bill. But because it is an interstate project, the state does reimburse the city, and it's supposed to be at 100%, although there are some items, for instance, bonds and insurance that the state will not pay for.
Okay. Shocking. Thank you. Item eight. Item nine. Item 10. Item 11.
They've done this heritage. They've got great reviews all over the United States.
Yeah, and I don't really see, I mean, it's obviously on consent, but it seems like a pretty simple agreement. And absolutely, if we're talking about creating affordable housing options, then this is definitely a deal. Item 12. Item E13. Item F, reports. We're going to start to my immediately right when we get to that point. So, Councilmember Meredith. And then we have closed session. So with no other comments on the agenda, we will go ahead and move into an update on the development of a nonprofit to support parks. And this will be presented by our Director of Parks and Recreation, Ms. Stacy Anaya. And I guess a PowerPoint ensues.
Stacy, I have to say, I love the world domination quote in there. I always do.
American Council Park Fund has been here to give a quick update on the development of a nonprofit and to support parks and how we're going to move forward with our friends from KOB. So if you'll remember, B.C., back in 2019, when we were doing council pitches, Councilmember Daniels pitched, had two pitches. One was that we get moving on the development of what would become Thrive Nature Park. And the other was that we look at a nonprofit to support parks and recreation initiatives, specifically those that had big price tags that might not fit within the bandwidth of our bonding or 4B program, right? So he wanted us also, he was also looking at what would the future of Keep Lewisville Beautiful be once Waste Management Landfill closed and they might not have that stream of revenue? So he thought it might be an opportunity for us to look, to combine forces, to combat the pending loss of financial support, but also look how we could direct volunteers and resources for both entities. And both pitches were funded and we started action on both of them. So in terms of the nonprofit, it was an action step that was funded in the fiscal year '20 for us to start that, learning what we needed to do to establish that, kick off conversations with KOB, and also fund our joining of the National Association of Park Foundations, so we could learn a little bit about the constructs of what we needed to do moving forward. Now, just a reminder, for those of y'all who aren't aware, Keep Lewisville Beautiful has been a force to be reckoned with within the city of Lewisville since the 1980s. They established formally as a nonprofit in '88. They are run by a volunteer board of directors. It really helps them set policy, but really what fuels them is their staff. They have a full-time executive director. Amy Wells is here with us today. And they have a part-time administrative assistant that helps them do all that they do for the community. And they have two funding resource, well, three right now. They have the DFW Landfill, which is Waste Management, and Republic Services, which gives them money to help them operate. They also do a really good job of applying for grant, community grants, and doing fundraisers and having donations filtered into them. They do a really wide scope of programs and workdays throughout not only the park system, but all of Lewisville. You know, they help put together the Trinity Trash Bash, which always gives us some interesting trash and throwaways that are found out in the community, mainly in the parks. But they help us with our Arbor Day celebrations and maintain our Tree City USA designation. They do a whole bunch of classes on how to garden and how to do that with native plantings to make sure that we're meeting all of our goals. They also do a great job of applying for money that filters back into the city to help us beautify public spaces like our medians along Valley Ridge Parkway and 407, and most recently, the Green Ribbon Project that's just going to get started at IH35 and Valley Ridge and the 121-340 corridors. They run our Adopt a Spot program, so if you're driving along, you see an median Adopt a Spot sign. We help print those signs and install them, but they run all the volunteers and track all the hours and get the volunteers heading towards that. And then they've also been working with us on a new initiative we're starting to get going, which is Giving for Green Spaces, which is companies and organizations that might want to put a little bit more into the park system or that helps us beautify, plant trees, more than one tree, more than one bench. They've been helping us with that. And the Rotary Club was the first one to kind of knock off that initiative with some plantings out on the Garden Ridge Parkway. In addition to all that they do programming and helping us with that, we've also entered to an agreement with them for lease for space out at the Visitor Center. They leased two offices. They use the conference room and the public reception area to help them facilitate their business. The agreement was put in place for, in 2019, and it runs through 2023. They've got some extensions in there. And part of that agreement was a reduction of rental rates for those spaces, for some of the things that they already do, help us with cleanups, help with Color Palooza and Western Days, staffing it at some of our events, and helping do those education programs that we work with them through the Sustainability and Neighborhood Services Office. They also help us distribute information about things that we're trying to achieve and that align with their mission. There was also a second part of that, was that they would get a 75% reduction of the total rent due if they helped us establish a parks foundation or a nonprofit to help us kind of meet that pitch that Council member Daniels put forward, and that that would be established under a separate agreement, that foundation, that once they put that agreement in place, they'd get that 75% reduction. So that kind of brings us up to, prior to that, what I'm about to go into, where our relationship is with KOB. So when we started talking about to merge the idea of a nonprofit for the Parks Department and KOB, we started looking, well, what do we need? And we thought about that we probably needed funding for three years to help us with the exploration and the establishment of it. You know, what would KOB need the structure of that agreement to be so that they wouldn't be violating any of their charter laws? Would we need a CPA to determine and keep those funding streams separate? And what would the administrative burden be on their team? So we put funding in place, like I said earlier, for that. And we also funded the attendance at the Park Foundation School so that we could learn more about what we needed to do to be successful. So KOB formed a subcommittee, and we had regular meetings with our team and their team to discuss what those concerns would be. A little bit of them were, what were the autonomy of the organization going to be? Would the Board of Directors of KOB still be the people directing what KOB would be doing? And how would that be seen with the Park Alliance? And where would they be getting direction? And what would the relationship with the city be? How would we make sure that we maintain a separation of funds, particularly when we might do joint events together, which makes sense, right? And what would those staff times and duties be? And then one of the most important things is, how do we work through competition of resources? Because it seems to be that we might be going after the same resources. And we were trying to set up a structure that would prevent us from doing that. So our initial brainstorm would be that we would have separate accounts and separate entities, but that Amy would manage both somehow. And we were going to work through that, and that we would assist with funding for the development of the Park Alliance. KOB would be focused on volunteer management, education programs, and the beautification and small-scale projects, you know, $10,000 under Keep the Adopt a Spot. And that the park nonprofit would be focused on big, significant projects, funding the Miracle Field, something with price tags over half a million dollars, looking at the next phases of Thrive Nature Park, but then also looking at some of our social equity goals with supporting scholarships for programs and activities for people who can't afford it at our current price point. So we're like, yeah, this sounds good, but let's go to the Park Foundation School and figure out if we're going to do that. And we tried to do that in 2020, but then the world hit pause, and so we had to wait till 2021. So at Park Foundation School, what we learned is, don't call it a park foundation, because a foundation sounds like you give people money. So you're going to get a whole bunch of letters saying, can you fund this for me, versus, no, 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 I need you to fund my stuff, right? So think about an alliance or Friends or something like that. And we have some Friends groups already in town, so Alliance is what we kind of landed on. The initial board of our nonprofit should be very, very small, nimble, three to five people. They establish a vision, a mission, and what the board member description should be, and then we go start recruiting those folks. One of the best things we learned, not best, it was like, one of the most salient things that we learned, is that Amy cannot be Executive Director of both. Both have separate missions that would cause confusion and could lead to conflict in the end, and that we should really see them as separate entities. KOB needs additional administrative support, and we need to figure out how we secure funding for them going forward once Waste Management closes. And then what we should really be looking at is the establishment of three agreements. KOB with the city of Lewisville to codify and memorialize what our current relationship is with them. We'll eventually need one between the city of Lewisville and the Park Alliance once established. And then KOB and the Park Alliance will need to have their own agreements between themselves, just so that we can talk about how we won't step on each other's feet and where there might be initiatives where we could leverage each other's resource. And then we also learned a little bit that there might be a potential for a strong triad between the Alliance, KOB, and the Friends of Lewisville, especially because we're all supporting similar efforts, and how that we might leverage our resources in the future. So we came back and we have a new game plan, right? We talked to the city managers over the course of this time, and we said, okay, look, we're going to focus on establishing a park alliance as a standalone entity. There will be a KOB, a relationship with KOB, but no formal administrative support by contract. The Park Alliance will have a focus on significant projects and scholarship report, and we're probably going to look at hiring someone to come in and help us figure out how we would establish the alliance. If you remember, Sally Gablick helped us write the grant application for TPWD when we got the money for Thrive. She also is now retired from city government and works as an Executive Director of a foundation in the state, and has had experience in setting them up in three different cities, so she'd be a really good resource for us. And then that we would have an MOU with the city once the alliance is, our agreement with the city, once the alliance is established. And then what KOB, what we should do is, we should pivot to having an agreement with them, and that we would memorialize our current relationship, and it would be a baseline for the future relationship between KOB and the Alliance. And that in this agreement, we would designate the replacement of Waste Management financial support upon closure, and that might come from an agreement we have with another landfill where there's some money earmarked for something like that. We'd amend the lease to the Visitor Center to address that that 75% reduction of the rent term has been met. And then we would encourage that the KOB have an MOU with the Alliance once it's established. So if y'all are quee with this, what we'll do is, back in March, later in March, we'll bring that agreement with KOB forward to you, to amend not only the lease, but also a new agreement with KOB. Then we'll start rolling into establishing the Park Alliance, finding those initial board members. And then in the summer, hosting a series of workshops where we would establish what the framework for the organization and strategic plan is. And then hopefully by 2023, we can continue on our quest for world domination with KOB and the Park Alliance. Okay. All right. You can come with us on our quest.
Okay, all right. Counsel, any other comments?
I can think of one person that, the person kicked all this off. We're going to go visit him and get him on this board.
All right. He is on the top of that invite list. Yes, sir.
I think it's a great process. I'm excited to see it. I'm disappointed that we can't find a synergy with Amy, but I understand the split there. And if we can figure out how to get this going sooner than later, that would be awesome.
Yeah, at first, we were kind of disappointed when we were walking away, but then we learned, you know what? It doesn't say that we can't do the same things. It's just the construct of the relationship is different. We can still get there.
Right. Makes sense. All right. Thank you so much.
Good presentation.
Thank you.
Next up is item C, update of the Public Safety Complex Design and Construction. This is going to be presented by our Deputy City Manager, Mr. Eric Ferris.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're going to share the presentation with city staff. Also, joining us tonight are representatives from BRW and PPV, so they'll be contributing in the discussion tonight to talk about where we are, and where we've been, and where we're going to go with the Lewisville Public Safety Complex. So we'll jump right into this. Again, this is our existing site. You'll see Valley Parkway to the east, or on the right side of the screen, with Main Street to the south. You can see in the right corner, you can see the police station, central fire, as well as the rest of the municipal annex with court, IT, city attorney's office, the library, and Herring to the north, and again, the county building up in the northeast corner of this property. Next slide you've seen before, but again, I think it's important to focus on, I'm going to try to zoom in on this, because again, this is a 1977 shot of the property. You can see the southwest savings building on the corner. You can see Central Fire Station is here, but again, the annex is not. You can see Civic Circle that's coming around and joining Valley Parkway. Valley Parkway is there. I think it's important to know at this point that RPS is under design for reconstruction of Civic Circle from Main Street around to Valley Parkway, and from Valley Parkway from Main Street north to College. And we are going to marry the two projects. RPS should, they're at about 60 to 90% by late summer. We should start construction, hopefully November, December of '22. And that's about a 12 to 16-month build, so this, Valley Parkway and Civic Circle will be complete prior to the LPSC. When I'm going to say LPSC, that's our acronym for Long-Winded Lewisville Public Safety Complex, but, so we are taking in consideration the driveway connections, water and sewer connections, the elevation, and as well as as much complete street as we can work into Civic to make both projects make sense and work together. This is the original Park Hill Smith conceptual site plan that was done nearly a year ago. They did a good job. They took the space needs of police and fire and welded it to our complex on the site. And again, it was very conceptual, just blocks and space to see, would it work on this site? Height, dimensions, lengths, orientation to Main Street, the renderings, the visioning, the facade is just for, that's not it. It was just an idea to see, would it work with parking and how would it fit on the site? So this was the original conceptual site plan. This is something that staff did with IT and Chris Lee and his staff. They went and looked at all the parking on the site. And this is an important site with parking. Prior to COVID and during COVID and after COVID, we think there will still be quite a lot of traffic coming to the site. There are 608 parking spaces on the municipal annex site today. You'll see in blue, you'll see the 134 that are either behind Central Fire Station or in the enclosed gate areas associated just east of the police department. So 134 spaces that really aren't available to the public. Everything else in red around the campus is 474 public parking spaces, but that's what we have on the ground today. I think that Park Hill, they were a little short when they looked at that at 5:49, so we corrected that. But that's our basifier right now of parking on the ground. Now, again, looking at their original parking exhibit, staff took this with Park Hill and said, let's be all we can be. Let's put as much parking on the site, whether we want it or not, whether it's realistic or not. But before we get started in a schematic design or going down the road, how much parking could we get? And let's be really aggressive. So we came up with 876. Now, I'll tell you, the nine over there, Carolyn got mad because that's in the book drop, so that's not legitimate. But you'll see that we took grassy areas in front of the detention facility, the northeast corner of Civic and Valley Parkway. You'll see that we took the circle out and put parking there. We put some staff parking north of Herring, the 27 spaces, maybe it's 27, maybe it's 15, but we tried to be as aggressive as we could, just dealing schematically to see what we could get, not knowing where we're going to be. Now, this illustration shows 250 spaces in an enclosed garage with 13 outside, so you'll see the 263 secured. Without a secured facility and without a parking structure, we could get 763. Now, that doesn't really mean anything, but it's still working outside in. Can we start designing to see, is it worthwhile? Or are we, are we going to design to 1,200 and we're wasting our time? Or do we need to go higher? But I think this is a good number to remember as we move through, and just a little spoiler, it's working out well because we're not close to that. Our team members, I'm very certain that we have some of the best team members working on this in the country. Pete Program Value, Mr. Chris Squadra, we crossed paths with Chris and his company in dealing with Thrive through BRS. And his company is very instrumental in construction cost estimation, both future and real-time dollars, from windows to wiring to insulation to elevators. You know, he can pretty much, I don't think the guy ever sleeps, but he's done a great job in saving us money with Thrive and other capital projects that he's working with the city, he and his staff. Contract development and management, it's been superb thus far, and this is by far going to be the biggest challenge we have with working with PPV. Under Chris's umbrella, we bring in 720 Design with Mr. Don Werzberger. Don is here today. And again, we've talked before, Mr. Werzberger has been instrumental in 150 to 200 public safety facilities, design and implementation across the country. And it's kind of neat to go on a tour, and we did this in Richardson and Grapevine, and the employees know Don, and he knows them. Regardless of what remote area you go into, they know Don, and that tells me right there, and they worked in the beginning, during construction, and after, and there's a relationship there. So I feel really good about the team with PPV and with 720, where we are today with that aspect. BRW Architects tonight is Representative Mr. Stephen Hilt. He'll be having discussions on schematics here in a minute with Jason Cave and Carol Kessler and members of their staff. They also partnered with Ross Shepard to bring expertise underneath their umbrella for design of the project, and we're excited to have them onboard. As of December 8th, now, we did go out on RFP, and we had a lot of participants, some of the biggest architectural firms in the country. So BRW had to compete, and compete well they did, to get this project. So they are our design architects of record. Our design advisory group is city staff, and right now, it's the city manager's office. We have, of course, Chief Dever, and we have Captain Barnhart, who's here tonight, as well as other members of PD at this point being involved. The Fire Department with Chief McNeil and Chief McGrath. Our building official, Jeremy Booker, has been very instrumental and very helpful so far in this project, will remain through the project with his staff members. And the real boss in this is Tracy Ogierik in purchasing. She keeps us all out of trouble and has done a great job in steering us through all the processes and things that we've been working with. Chris Lee and David McAllister with ITS is of great importance. Right now, through the process, all the way through construction until we move in, we've noticed that a couple of the large projects that we've referenced, they missed IT. And right, wrong, or indifferent, they did, whether they had the input upfront or not, but we're going to give it everything we have to make sure that this facility is a quick right with technology, with audio and visual. That way, we're not redoing something after two years, and there's a couple of facilities in the Metroplex, and they're having to do that. They started at $500,000 and then north of $2 million. Two years later, changing out things that did not work. So we're excited to have ITS working with us at this point. Other departments will come and go, planning, engineering, facilities. It'll be a change in and change out depending on where we are in the process. So be very involved. I'm sure BRW and Pete will be tired of our, with staff being involved in the meetings we are, but it worked well with Thrive, and we do not change, we are not changing that tactic. We're going to work all the way through this project as well. Again, our site data, we have 16 acres on the annex site. That's plotted into four lots, library annex, police, fire, and herring at various stages through the decades. We're going to replat everything into one final plat. We think it's advantageous. The whole annex, the 16 acres are involved here because we're rerouting water, domestic, fire protection, sanitary sewer, storm, access easements, power, and really important fiber coming into our data center and all those things. So the entire site will be involved. So we're going to plat everything into one light. We'll do an engineering site plan for the entire site, and we're not at that point yet, but we are starting to look at that. So the DAG will expand to incorporate the Design Review Committee that we typically deal with with the development on those two documents. But we're gearing up for that. We're already identifying areas that we need to concentrate on. Again, this building is still at 116,000 square feet at this point. Parking deck, we'll talk about a little bit on the size of that, where we are today, where we may have to go, where we may not. Our budget, 96.7. We're holding tight right there. So I think at this point, I'm going to invite Chris Squadra to come up, talk a little bit about what he does.
Thank you, Eric. So before we jump into a quick budget update, I thought it might be interesting, if not a little scary, to take a look at some of the headwinds that we're looking at. There's really three things that are impacting our industry right now. You've heard about all of them before. There's a labor shortage. Until we did some research last quarter and kept updating it, we didn't really know how bad it was. it, we didn't really know how bad it was. There's ten point nine million open jobs right now, and that's sixty percent more jobs than were open in twenty nineteen before the pandemic. That's not the really scary part, though. The really scary part is there's only six people looking for work for ten, every ten open jobs. So if everybody who's looking for work right now found a job, there'd still be four million jobs open, and that's due to a lot of factors. So that's affecting the ability of contractors to perform and subcontractors. Escalation, steel is up thirty-seven percent from this time last year. Oil went above ninety bucks a barrel. I think it hit ninety-three last week and dropped back down to ninety-one on Friday. But that's the first time since twenty fourteen that oil has been over ninety bucks. And oil, well, these are just, you know, Eric told me I had, um, less than an hour for this slide, so, so I, I had to restrain myself. It's, uh, but wages grew at the fastest pace in twenty-one years, and, um, there's faster wage growth is in the offing for this year. So that all plays into our predictions of what we're going to pay, right? Supply chain delays at ports and warehouses, while some people say they're abating, they're not. They're actually going up, and they're supposed to be severe for quite a while. This one is really the scariest to most people who really pay attention to supply chain. There used to be forty day supply of computer chips in every manufacturing facility if, that needed them, whether it was for refrigerators or air, air conditioning units or lighting control panels. Your Commerce Department released a survey on January twenty-fifth of this year saying that that supply is down to five days worth of supply. So in large cities in China, when they shut the entire city of eight million down for Omicron because of one case of COVID at a, um, at a port, and those eight thousand port workers are sent home for five days, if we run out of chips, um, we don't get to make anything. So we're going to be running it at one point two percent a month through this year, and of course, there's always the never say never. People say the Chinese economy may stall. And so I'll hit the escalation bullet last on this slide and tell you what we'll do if I'm wrong, and I hope I am, that the escalation doesn't hit. The images that you're going to see today of our selected scheme have been estimated at sixty-seven point three million dollars. We, uh, what you're looking at has about five point seven million dollars worth of scope in it that we have committed to a team, as a team, to work down from what you're going to see. So, you know, some of the ideas are the parking structure has an extra deck on it. Um, there's a bridge that may, um, have to be rethought, and there's some other ideas there. Soft costs are two point, twenty-seven point nine million. That's design, engineering, permitting, all of those, uh, materials testing. And that escalation at seven point two was ten something million in July when we gave you the numbers to go to bond with. So we have moved that much further forward, so we've reduced the escalation reserves, and we're still holding seven point two million. So some of the scope, the value options targets up above will turn into alternates. And if the marketplace turns down, which most people think it will not, but if it does, then we'll have, uh, the flexibility to absorb the additional money in our budget. But we're predicting the headwinds will continue. So that gets us to the ninety-six point seven. So I thought I'd take a breath here on the budget slide and see if anybody has any questions? Any horror stories from your personal experience about ordering refrigerators or anything you'd like to share?
I know there's a, a potential problem with roof insulation right now. Has that, has that been looked at too as far as a problem on this job?
Yes, um, we, we're, we just bid a project in, um, late October last year in which all the roofing bids came in labor, and then they had an estimate of square footage and roofing insulation. Um, no one would actually commit to a price. Um, and elevators are another area where schedule thirty-eight weeks to get an elevator now. So there's all, there's this, I'm, Eric's getting ready to get the hook, so I'll, I'll just say, uh, Councilman Meredith, that maybe offline, we can talk about all of the different pieces and parts so we don't, uh, bore our constituents. Right? But yes, there's a lot of scary things out there.
So it sounds like we at least have a plan to order these things to meet, because the timelines are so long now to, to make sure that we at least hit the schedules as far out as they are, but...
Yes, um, on the fleet and fleet maintenance facility, some of you may remember that we came to council with a guaranteed maximum price number one for steel in April to cut that loose first, and we avoided about four hundred thousand dollars worth of escalation. But more importantly, we're going to get our bargejoys, um, in eleven months after we ordered it. Then we came back to you with the guaranteed maximum for the rest of the building. So yeah, we'll, we'll be doing a lot of that strategic thinking. We'll probably come to you with three or four guaranteed maximum price pieces to, to stay ahead of that tsunami. Any other questions? And I'll let you know, everyone in the audience is hoping no. But okay, great. Uh, I'll go on to schedule. The conceptual design you'll see here today was selected on the ninth of February. That was one week ahead of schedule. I'm very pleased to report that this team is working like an oil, oiled machine, and we're beating our deadlines. The Seymour contractor will be onboard on the eighteenth of April. I think you, you're going to do a slide on that a little later. And construction start is TBD based on headwinds. When we get the Seymour onboard, we're going to do a procurement, a detailed procurement schedule. And obviously, if it takes thirty-eight weeks to get an elevator, um, it may impact our date, and so our construction completion date is fall or winter of twenty twenty-four. Okay? Any questions on schedule? Okay. I will turn it over from the black and white slides to someone with a little more color, my esteemed colleague, Stephen Hilt.
Thank you, Chris. One of the main, main things that we were looking at in the concept design, um, stage was to settle on a site layout. So I just want to walk you through some of the deliberation that we had to arrive at the decision, um, that we've made as a group with the design advisory group. You'll see a lot of similarities between these schemes. We did look at things that were more wide-ranging, but we very quickly came to the conclusion that certain elements in certain locations just made too much sense for that not to be part of the schemes that we're looking at. So, uh, we dialed it into the three that were the most promising, uh, for the layouts, and there are some differences between them. And after I've explained, uh, briefly, uh, the chiefs might, uh, give their opinions as well as to what they liked and didn't like about each of these schemes. Uh, some of those things that you'll see repeated is, uh, police along Main Street, uh, where it can have access, uh, to existing jail. And with the shared use between police and the fire station being on the first floor, addressing the public corner and between the two where it can be easily accessed by both. And then the fire and apparatus bay being on Valley Parkway, uh, because that's just a better access for, uh, the fire apparatus to get out rather than trying to come out on the busy street of Maine. Uh, we never really seriously considered it being anywhere else. And then, of course, the parking garage, uh, being a large structure, uh, is important as well. You'll see that in the back, uh, in each of these cases, so it's kind of shielded from the streets by the rest of the buildings. We want to de-emphasize that, uh, in part also because it is for public safety and a few staff, uh, parking that's secured, and the, the public will not be parking in that garage. Uh, so it's part of our security perimeter as well. And then you'll see the, the purple, which is also shared, but it's heavily policed underneath the garage, uh, that is support space. And in each of these schemes, we have pulled that out of the police building, uh, because there's a lot of access that needs to happen around that, and it just kind of clutters up the ability to really get windows into spaces that we need and make the facility work the way that it ought to if we don't pull the support building out of the main structure. Uh, that's kind of a, a trend in, in a lot of police facilities today. So you'll see those, uh, being a common thread through all of these. Uh, this one being Scheme A, uh, was the idea of pushing the apparatus bay as far north as we could, and, uh, there's some concerns that perhaps with peak traffic of the high school and so forth, that there might be times when that would want to start to, uh, possibly stack up to a point that it might create a little bit of an issue for getting out at certain times of day. So that was, uh, one of the main thrusts of this one, push the appi, apparatus bays as far north as we could. Uh, you can see that puts the fire administration on the second floor above a first floor, uh, fire station in this scheme. And, uh, that was really one of the main advantages was getting that out there. It does also perhaps give us, uh, a little bit more parking than another one that we'll look, look at at the front side. Chiefs, did you have a, anything you'd like to add?
Certainly. So from the fireside, uh, Stephen touched on the apparatus bay, so that was important to not get it too close to Maine. We need to stay fairly close to where we are coming out on the valley. We like that. Uh, we like the parking on valleys in front of that shared space because that shared space will have some training, uh, classrooms, so we need parking for people to come to that. Uh, some of the things, or another thing we liked is the flow. So we're condensed, fire is connected, and, and so the flow of traffic is good for us. Uh, the things we didn't like about it, so fire admin is located north of where a public entrance would be tied down on that south corner by Main and Valley. So we're going to push to the north of this, this building, which would, uh, make a shared entrance, not, not feasible or not practical. Uh, we didn't like, uh, one of the other things we didn't like is the fact that the station is under admin. So it gives, uh, our, it takes away from our traditional firehouse feel and kind of makes it more of an industrial, uh, type, and they're, and they don't have their own space, uh, connected to that building.
Before I start talking, you guys probably haven't seen me at many of these meetings. I'm Craig Barnhart. I'm one of the captains with the police department. Chief Dever couldn't be here this evening, and since I've gotten a chance to go to all these meetings, I'm here to, to talk to you guys now about this. Uh, this particular scheme was one that, um, the police side didn't have a terrible problem with because the support building being relatively close to the police department is an important aspect for us. But as Chief McNeil was saying, there are some other elements as far as pushing the fire department away from, from, uh, the police department didn't seem to really meld together as well as we were thinking. And so, uh, that, that scheme was not terribly off for us, but, uh, still had some issues, obviously, that Chief McNeil addressed.
So this is just an overhead 2D view, uh, maybe not quite as interesting to look at, but you can see that it, it does preserve a similar amount of parking to other schemes and gives us a, a good amount of parking on the street. Scheme B, uh, again, has some similar elements, but in this case, we're, the main idea of this one is taking the support building and instead of putting it underneath the garage, uh, like you saw in the previous one, putting it by itself up to the north, uh, to the northeast corner. And the idea there is perhaps we could build support building, um, independently by itself, get property and evidence moved over there so that, uh, we could then have that as a very clean break for occupying that portion of the building. Uh, it was really not fitting into our overall, um, preferred schedule because even by doing that, you still got to wait for a building to be constructed, uh, as opposed to where it's in the garage, it's just not really very practical to have a garage that's still being used for construction and in the middle of that zone being occupied. So putting in the garage really means we need to find another home for property and evidence while we're still constructing the rest of the site. And even putting it on this corner, we were finding it's still problematic and not being able to get the contractor, the rest of, uh, the area that he needs to build adjacent to those other buildings. Uh, another part of the big idea of this one was to get, uh, a larger courtyard since the support building being up on the northeast corner is pushing us down, uh, a little bit further south on the site. Uh, we're taking advantage of that to get a larger courtyard that is shared for police and fire, a little bit secluded, gives them a space that's on a very active site that they have a little outdoor space that's their own. Um, I think that was pretty well received, uh, but you can see maybe a little bit better from the overhead view, uh, that it does restrict us a little bit more on, perhaps on the site parking in front of the building, uh, than some of the other schemes do.
Sure. First you stop? Sure. Take all your points. So, um, this is the one from the police side that was, was probably not the best for us, simply because of the position where the support building is, is where property and evidence is going to be packaged. And, um, the distance from the police building to the actual support building itself would, would pose a problem in certain circumstances. Because a lot of times the guys are making big arrests or big, um, uh, evidence gathering times, and, and it would really be pretty substantial for them to have to walk from the police building back over to the support building, uh, multiple times if they're having to do things, uh, with the evidence during the report writing time. So the support building being separated from the distance that it was, was problematic for us. And again, we'd have to actually cross by the apparatus bay every single time we're going to that particular building. And so with the support building being separated the way it was, it became problematic for the police side.
For us, we had, uh, some of the same complaints or some of the same dislikes. Our bay was shifted a little farther south. It still worked, but, uh, the, obviously, the flow of traffic for the support building was a problem. Our admin was still located farther north from that, uh, shared entrance, uh, at the corner of Main and Valley than we liked. We did like the courtyard. Uh, we still, the, the fire station under the admin just is, uh, more of an industrial feel and not our traditional firehouse, so we didn't like that as well.
Then Scheme C, which is the one that we've landed on as, as the preferred scheme. In this case, we're taking the fire station and we're flipping it to the far northeast corner as opposed to the support building. And what that does is it gives the firefighters, uh, their own outdoor space, which is the way that they're used to operating in every other fire station in the city. And generally, uh, most fire stations have that. Uh, it also makes the, the fitness, um, in a good location to be shared by fire and police and the shortest distance to the apparatus bay for response time from that fitness. It lets us put the shared use to where it can have a connection to that fitness room on the first floor and still put it in the, in the, in the same general position in the building. And then fire administration being upstairs, uh, as Chief just mentioned, this does the best job of integrating. Fire and police administration gives them the best ability to consider sharing use of spaces, which we're going to be looking at to try and see how efficient we can get that, you know, what can they share in, in, in space inside the building. Gives us the best opportunity for an entry which accesses police and fire, uh, from a public standpoint, coming in probably near that corner of the building. Uh, the apparatus bay is further north. It's kind of the middle, middle of the road. It's between the two schemes as far as being away from the intersection, uh, so we kind of get the best of the, both worlds on that as well. And the support building, as you can see, is back underneath the garage, and we have preserved, maybe not quite as large, but a good courtyard concept, which was also popular with both departments.
So this one met a lot of our, our needs. So the station, we like having that on the north side where it's more of our traditional firehouse type feel. Uh, they can have their space, but still connected with that property and that building. Uh, the admin shifted closer. I think that will help us as we, we share space. Uh, we were able to obtain, uh, more parking there along Valley for that, uh, shared space for classrooms, and we love the workout facility. Uh, I think located like that, it's not one or the other, it's connected to the shared spaces, and I think that will make it feel like it's everybody's, makes it accessible for both, uh, police and fire.
Yeah, and to piggyback off of, uh, Chief McNeil's, uh, points there, you know, the, the shared fitness area, the, the fitness area itself looked like it was going to fit really well for, uh, not only the, the police officers to be able to work out close to the police building, but for the fire guys to be able close, to be close to the apparatus bay. So if they get a call, it's a shorter distance from, for them to go to. Um, the support building underneath The support building underneath the parking garage was also, again, a big factor for us because it brings it close to the police department and it gives us an opportunity to house our specialty vehicles like the Bearcat, which requires covered parking to keep the laminate on the windows without being compromised. And again, property and evidence being in that area is big for us. It's going to be a very good opportunity for us to keep the odor of some of the drugs that are seized emanating throughout the police department, which is a big element. Anytime anybody comes in in the morning, you always know when somebody's made a big marijuana arrest the night before because it permeates pretty much throughout the entire building. And having this separated like that is a is a big plus for us.
Any questions on the layout or scheme?
Maybe have one small comment, and I'm sure it's already been thought of, but when we do our open house events now, it's quite a bit of open space in the back. Parking garage, I think, is absolutely needed. But if there's some ways we can be creative with linkages to the other parking lots to maybe expand that footprint to maybe recapture some of that space for the open house, I really think that that's an important factor that our departments, we we need to have that open house. And and it's been a great event in years past, and I would hate for this to compromise that too much. I think it already would be pushing it for the helicopters, but if if we can, we can make sure that maybe there's some design tweaks with the rest of the parking lots to make it easier for people to to use that space for an event, especially that event.
Yeah, and we we are considering, you know, the possibility of a future level perhaps or expanded parking in the garage that would maximize the availability of other parking on the site for public use. We're probably not looking at opening the garage to public parking ever, just from a security standpoint. But yes, in terms of using the big public space that would be in the facility, that's certainly something that we're we're aiming for.
Thank you.
I have a question. Have we have we looked at, I agree, I like Scheme C the best as well. Have we, this is going to be a complicated build. Have we looked at construction sequencing yet and how, what is that going to look like and how we're going to maintain operation while we're building this? Eric, am I jumping ahead?
Great question. It's a good segue.
You want to take that?
Sure.
Okay.
We'll just, we'll get, we'll get to that in just a second. It's a great question, both. So I think it's a good segue in the next slide. We're working very hard to look at parking on the site. I'm going to roll in a little bit. Jeremy Booker has been working with the departments here on parking on the campus. Our number right now, without a design, we do not have a design. We have a very conceptual layout. We're going to schematic design, but again, we're doing space design. But our number right now is 750 spaces for the site. That's 344 in the parking garage, whether that's two and a half, three and a half levels, we don't know yet. But our goal is to get our all fire personnel, all PD, including city attorney's office and municipal judge in a secured, safe area where they can park and come in and come and go at various times of the day and night and have that flow in a secured environment. So 344 is our number. So Jeremy spent time looking at, came into, looking with the other departments from the library, IT, the court. You know, Herring's going to open up and we'll should be having Thanksgiving dinner there this year. Fingers crossed with stays, what was your word, if the world turns over? I don't know what you said earlier, but but Herring's going to open up this fall, November, with two gems, racquetball and the parks, first time ever thought through design Parks and Recreation Administration facility. I'm really excited about that. But they'll be opening in November. So the parking lot there to the north is going to be active with public and staff. So again, when you look at the lots here, especially the lot the mayor was talking about behind the garage, there's about 110 spaces programmed here in this. Again, we don't have a design, but it's conceptual. This is library parking. If you take Google, it'll take you to this door. But again, that's library parking. It's IT, it's 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 public. If we have an event in the community room in the annex, parking for there. It's also spillover parking for Herring. We're going to try to get some staff parking north of Herring. We're going to come back on the Civic Circle side and maximize the intersection. The parking to the south on Main Street is primarily court and some IT and some patrons of the detention facility. Again, the parking you see next to the PD and to the LPSC on Main and Valley Parkway, that's, again, we're going to have Greenway, we're going to have Plaza. This is schematic. We may not need all of this, but again, we programmed parking for training, for workouts, for personnel off duty to park there in lieu of in the back. But it's going to be a very important dance to arc, to articulate the puck, the parking networks with cross access, if we can do it, from Valley Parkway West over to Civic. So Jeremy's been working with the departments and working very closely with design at this point, and that's our number, it's 750. And that takes us to build out. If the dollars, you saw the 5.7, where it's too early to tell yet, but again, we're looking at that, we're going to try for the 344. If we have to cut costs, we may lose a deck on there and we fall back to 270 or something in the in the parking garage or the height of that. But it's a little too early to guesstimate on that, but we are looking at that. And the cross access of how people travel on the annex campus to wherever they may be going. And the library post prior to COVID was 1,000 visits per day. So we expect that that's not going to decrease as we open back up. A few minutes left, we're about through. So where are we now? Scheme C is our conceptual design layout. I think the staff has done a great job of pounding through how this could be laid out under a one roof shared facility. Our parking counts were at 750, so there's our 344 enclosed parking garage. It's still our goal for our sex, his customer and other staff parking, and that should be sufficient for this, for this property at 16 acres. The parking garage will be designed structurally to go up in time. So we're going to put the money and the dollars in the structural columns and supports and the 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 bins, the lifts, everything about it, that if if in 25, 30, 35 years, we need to add more parking in that facility, we can go up. It could be that more squad cars and police personnel that may go home with officers. We don't know how that, what that looks like in 25 or 30 years, but we're looking at that at this point. A very important part we are looking right now on temporary relocation space needs. So Central Fire Station will come off. Fire Administration will come off the site. The police department will come off the site. The jail will stay, which means we need about 15,000 square foot of conditioned space minimum for PD, about 5,000 conditioned space for fire department admin minimum with around 250 parking spaces. And our best bet right now, it appears to be existing vacant office space rather than go out and recreate something. We don't have the room in our city facilities. A big modular farm we could do, but that's very expensive. So our best bet, we're working with PPV and our real estate contacts. We're looking at sites in the city right now where that may be. They can go anywhere, but Central Fire Station cannot. Central Station needs to be in district. So we have a couple of areas we're looking, and that will probably be a safe, secured modular farm for Central Fire Station in the central district. We have, we need at least two acres in size. We have a couple of key properties that we're looking at right now that would do that. And there again would be Quonset Hut style of facilities for the apparatus with modulators for the fire personnel apparatus and the personnel to operate for a year and a half or so as Central Station. It's not throwaway dollars per se because we're delivering a service, but it's dollars we're trying to reduce rather than just go out willy nilly and and spend a lot of money that we can't recoup. So that's the process right now we're looking at. We've identified the needs and the space. We've identified the the size and really the location for Central. Everything else, we're feverishly trying to find the best, the best economics and the best value. Yes, sir.
No, I'm good.
Okay. You have another question? All right. Watch me, Mayor.
I have one, Eric.
We're, we're going to need to, we're going to need to move into the regular session here in just a moment. What we could do, Mr. Ferris, is once we do the pledges and whatnot, pop right back to you if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mayor, can I ask my question?
Yeah, we've got 30 seconds.
Okay, I was just going to ask the 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 cost that you're talking about to get the modular offices to kind of move everybody so we can, that is above and beyond the 96 million, is that correct?
There, Chris, that, there is, there is.
That's inside the 96.
That's inside the 96.
There's a figure there. Now, again, it's controlling.
That's the answer I wanted.
Yes, ma'am. Good question. It's there, but it may not be the Cadillac version. So we're living within that dollar. It's best if we can find pavement, water, sewer, driveways and a lot of the infrastructure that's already there to put those modulators on. And that's, we think we found one or two properties that that will make that happen to reduce that cost and keep us within budget that's in the 96.7. Yes, ma'am.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. We'll jump right back. Super. All right. It is now 7:00 PM. I'm going to call this regular session of the Lewisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum, and let's go ahead and move to items A and B. The invocation will be with Councilmember Meredith, please.
Please join me in a moment of silence.
Mayor Protem Green.
Please join me in the pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God one indivisible.
All right. We are, we are going to move item G up to the front of the conversation, which is to go back into the workshop just to finish off with Mr. Ferris, and then we will move to item C, which is the visitor citizen forum.
So again, I anticipate, I anticipate that we will, we'll, we'll talk about the schedule in a minute, but we are looking feverishly for those temporary facilities as we speak. And again, I think, we lost our presentation. There we go. So at the moment, and we've begun programming and meeting with divisions, activities and the personnel in both fire and police, that process has started. That will continue through design, through the time we move into this facility. It'll get down to, I know that Captain Barnhart's been looking at lockers, whether it's with different types of lockers, different duty lockers and all of everything, and everything you can think of that PD and fire will be looking at through the process. We will communicate with our employees in both fire and police as well as the rest of the members at the site, whether it's library or whatever, and keep them involved in the design of this project. It will not be done, you know, hands off or whatever. We're all in. So that process was started and it will continue. We're down to, from nine companies on construction manager at risk. We did an RFP and we had some of the biggest countries in the country. These are all very, very good countries, very good companies and some of the best in the country. We had nine. We graded those, we evaluated their proposals, we shortlisted four companies. Burn Construction Services, Core Construction, JE Dunn and Pogue Construction. We'll be setting up those interviews in the near future, hopefully get down to a successful C Mar. But again, the other companies are really good, but they just didn't score as high as these four that made the shortlist. So next steps, again, lock down the temporary police and fire facilities. Where are, where are they going to be? Where is Central Fire Station? Get a cost on those and get them in place and have those scheduled out depending upon the design and the demolition when we move out. But again, get those locked in and get that out of the way. Get our C Mar selection process shortlist down to the finalist and C Mar selected by April of 2022. And that's pedal to the metal to move that fast and get the interviews, which will start in March and be selected by April, to get a C Mar onboard to help with the the design through the process. We are at this point starting our our architectural visioning process. My words would be renderings and facade and how this looks on the campus, the building, the landscaping, how it sits, whether there's Plaza, and make it fit as a cornerstone project for the city of Louisville. Make it match the community, make it safe for our employees to work in, make it not look like Fort Knox, but make it safe, make it blend and make it something that we could all be proud of. But again, that visiting process will involve a lot of different folks, whether it's city staff, the community perhaps, the council as well, other, other, other boards or whatever, but that process is about to kick off. Schematic design is is kicking off as we speak. We have a conceptual with just boxes, but that's where we are. And I believe that concludes the presentation. We will continue to bring presentations to council as we have cornerstones in this project. By far, it's the biggest one the city's ever done. Remember, Thrive was south of 50 million at 89,000 square feet. You know, this is a large facility as well, but again, the dollar amount is astronomical. As, as Chris Squidra told you, that escalation at 1.1% per month, time is money. So pedal to the metal, and we're not being reckless, but we are, we're not waiting around. We're making decisions. So questions?
I have a comment. So whenever I, whenever I first was introduced to this was probably in 2014, 2015, and I want to say the price tag was somewhere around maybe 60, 70-ish million. So, and I know that that this has been a need that has been talked about for years and years and years. And the 95 million, the 96 million was a, was a huge ask and the community supported it. And I just want to commend city staff for taking it as seriously as the citizens took it to get as many different departments involved. We got the the right professionals onboard. We have all the different departments that are going to be using the facility involved in the very, very beginning instead of bringing them in at the end. I think, you know, it's, I I just want to say thank you for your commitment to doing this right. And this, we are spending, I know 95, 96 million dollars sounds like, it ought to be easy to get this thing built with that amount of money, but it is going to be a, a, a very targeted effort. And I am very, very proud of the team that the city has put together and making that commitment to doing it the way that we are. So thank you.
Similar to what Mayor Protem Green said, we've kind of been here before with, with Thrive, where we went back and forth. We have new challenges now with the, with, with getting deliverables, but I think we're doing it the right way. The plan, the plan is going as it should with the right people who are involved, and I I look for for a great product when it get done, and we'll get it in at budget. Not, not by our way.
Councilmember Kate.
He had to jinx that, didn't he?
I know, right?
It's like saying, hope you have a good night, it's full moon. I'm, I'm very impressed and y'all are taking this. It's gone very quick just since the election. And with the prices and how they're doing, expedience is, it's a good thing, but you're doing it cautiously and the way it should be. And I'm very proud, I'm very proud of our city for this. It's going to be, it'll be there for years and years and years to come. But good job, good job to all of y'all because everyone has had some part in this. So.
Thank you. Councilmember Meredith.
Just congratulations on getting this going because I, I do this all day long, every day too. So I know it's, it's, it's tough getting all these departments together, getting all this information quickly, getting contractor onboard. It looks like you're being very conservative with the escalation, which is good because that's, I think that's going to be the the key to this whole thing is what is that going to do to us in the future? And just looking out for what materials may be, you know, a problem to to get a hold of. But yeah, it's, it looks like it's going in the right direction.
Councilmember Tori.
I can't really add anything that hasn't already been said other than I'm sure that it, it appears to me that our citizens are going to get what they, that they asked for. So I'm really, and I do congratulate the staff and everyone who's been working on this. It's, it's an amazing project.
Mayor, can I say one more thing? I did want to add that obviously Eric is very humble about this and it is a team effort, but he really is our general boots on the ground on this project. It really requires someone to dig deep and know all the facets and understand all the different players, and he's done an amazing job. So I, I wanted to thank him as well.
We get fights all the time after breaking up.
There you go.
Mayor, can I say one more thing? I did want to add that obviously Eric is very humble about this, and it is a team effort, but he really is our general boots-on-the-ground on this project. It really requires someone to dig deep and know all the facets and understand all the different players, and he's done an amazing job. So I wanted to thank him as well.
We get fights all the time after breaking up.
There you go. There you go. I had a couple of quick points that I was really appreciative of. Number one, of course, I heard repeatedly that you all are asking those frontline officers and fire department personnel on what they need. This first and foremost is not a pretty facade. It is first and foremost a working facility. And the detail of making sure that we don't have police officers walking across fire apparatus travel lanes, I thought was really significant, that you guys were paying attention to the small details, even though we're moving this quick. So keep it up. I also want to thank the citizens of Lewisville for approving this. It's a big ask, and we do not take it lightly. None of us who are elected to represent you, nor the folks in these four walls, and I think you guys are going to be very proud of what comes from this. I do want to make one point on costs as well. Remember, this is a hardened facility. So when you start thinking about square footage and cost per square foot, it is a very different build-out when you're talking about a facility that needs to protect these people from some pretty significant things. So those costs, and I'm sure if anybody wants to dig into it, we can show. But to Councilmember Green's point, those costs are not insignificant to build this thing to the standards that are required to keep these folks safe. So I'm excited about what we're doing, and God speed, guys. Keep it going. All right. We're going to move to item C, Visitor Citizens Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and or address, or and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony, and speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. I do have a request to appear before the city council from Mr. Gary Kerbo. Mr. Kerbo, if you wouldn't mind approaching, you'll have five minutes, and if you could please state your name and address for the record, sir. Thank you for being here.
Mayor Gilmore, council members, city staff, and guests, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I'm Gary Kerbo. I reside at 210 Cheek Sparker Road in Colleyville, Texas, 76034. So you know, I'm not a citizen of Lewisville, but I grew up in this area, and I have a vested interest in this town. So I'm here to address one item on the consent agenda. In item 5D, you will be asked to consider approval of a contract for the demolition of the water tower located at Main Street and Highway 35. Now, this tower is more widely known as the Fighting Farmer Water Tower. I was honored to have been asked to serve on the Citizens Committee to review possibilities for how this beloved tower could be preserved and discuss ideas on what the final design would look like. Our discussion led to many possibilities for preserving the tower on its present site and in much the same design as was depicted the last time the tower was painted in 1993. Now, as you know, during our discussion, it was determined that the cost was too prohibitive to invest in a structure that had been removed from service since 2010. So as an alternative, the opportunity for the city to assist in the design of the artwork to be included as part of the highway expansion project led to the design and approval of scenes of Lewisville that depicted or represented Old Town, and were greeted with enthusiasm by both the Tower Committee and the City Council. Among those images to be preserved is a tasteful and lasting image of the Fighting Farmer Water Tower, which will be included in the artwork and prominently featured on both sides of the highway located under the Main Street Bridge when it's finally completed. Although it's not the same, this solution is seen as a way to preserve the image of the tower and continue to pay tribute to its memory. Now, I'd like to thank the city staff for their willingness to work with the Tower Committee as representatives of the Lewisville community, LHS alumni, and student body. I would especially like to thank James Conkey, Community Relations and Tourism Director, for working diligently with this committee all along the way and keeping us informed on the latest developments. In fact, that's what brings me here tonight to address you. Being of us has expressed an opportunity to hold an event at the tower, at the tower site as a way of paying one final tribute to it prior to its removal. We learned a few weeks ago that the bid's had been received, and we're on track to make a recommendation at a meeting sometime in February with the possible project start date in early March. Once it was learned that this item would be up for a vote tonight, in that timeline, and the timeline to initiate the demolition could begin as early as the first two or three weeks in March, we hurriedly began putting together an event to celebrate the tower and all its meant to this community. So with this short window of opportunity, last week, we requested permission from the city, with Mr. Conkey as our point of contact, and he was gracious to accommodate our request to schedule this event. So this Saturday morning, February 26, at 10 o'clock AM, we'll host a farewell tribute to the water tower. We put a program together, and notices have been posted on social media outlets to invite the community, and include a number of special guests that have played a role in Lewisville's past and have significant ties to the water tower. The LHS band will be there, along with many students, staff, alumni, and community members to celebrate this event. I know it's short notice, but I'm here tonight to extend an invitation to the mayor and the council members to celebrate with us, and to you, Ms. Mayor Gilmore, be prepared to say a few words on behalf of the city and its citizens regarding this icon that has been present in our community since 1959. So I want to say thank you for the opportunity to appear before you and express my appreciation for the thoughtful diligence in exploring every opportunity to preserve this tower. It's my hope to see each of you there this Saturday at 10 o'clock. Thank you.
Gary, thank you. I appreciate your time and effort that you put in all of this. In my line of work, what you just did is what's called an assumptive close, so I will be there. All right. Item, unless we have other comments. City Secretary?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you. Item D, Consent Agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. City Secretary, were there any e-commerce or speaker cards?
Yes, sir, there were not.
Counsel, if there is nothing to remove, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you would please vote. Consent agenda passes five to nothing. Item E, Regular Hearing 13. Consideration of a variance to the Lewisville City Code, Section 6-103E, Access Management Auxiliary Lanes for AACC Worship Center, a 1.2-acre parcel zone to light industrial located at the southwest corner of Oak Bend Drive and Rock Brook Drive, requested by Ninecon NDN Associates LLC on behalf of the owner. The property is being platted and site-planned by the owner to construct a 5,000-square-foot worship center at the southwest corner of Oak Bend Drive and Rock Brook Drive. The property will be served by one driveway on Oak Bend Drive and shared driveway on Rock Brook Drive. The owner is requesting a variance to waive the requirement for a right-turn lane at a major intersection. It's recommended that the city council approve the variance request as set forth in the caption above. We do have Mr. David Salmon available for questions as city engineer. Mr. Salmon, I'm going to assume, because you guys always do such a great job, that you're not seeing traffic stacking issues on Sundays.
No, not at all. With the two different driveways, I don't see any issue with this particular site causing any sort of congestion.
Super. I appreciate you guys doing the due diligence on that. I know it's always can be a little contentious when we put a new church or something in where the neighborhood might be impacted. So I appreciate you looking through all that. Counsel, other questions?
I had a quick question. I noticed when I was reading through the material that the other, so we were, the traffic study was just looking at this specific use and not necessarily everything around it. Are we not concerned about that, just because they've dedicated the right-of-way for the right-turn lane, just in case it's needed in the future, since they're not looking at future development?
Yeah, the traffic study took into account existing traffic, of course, and then the added traffic from the proposed development. Of course, being on the corner and having two driveways, this particular development doesn't really generate a lot of right-turning movement at that location. When you look at future development, there is some vacant property out there, and of course, we don't know today exactly what will happen with that property. So the church has agreed to dedicate right-of-way in the event that we ultimately, we do need a turn lane there. At this point, there really is no need for a turn lane. We're not having any issues. And, you know, right-of-way is usually the hardest thing, part of a project. So I think there's some value there.
I definitely think we're thinking ahead on that. So I thought that was a very smart move.
Other comments? Counsel, if there are none?
I'll make a motion to, I'll move to approve the variance as requested as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item F, Reports. These are reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. We do have a quarterly investment report in our council documentation from October 1st to December 31st, 2021. I don't know if anybody had any questions on that. Counselmember Meredith, if you wouldn't mind?
Yeah, before I get started on the library activities, just want to say, we went to the Chin National Day Program Saturday, and if you haven't been to that, it's, I highly recommend going to that. It was a very, very good program, although a lot of it was in Chin, but still, a lot of, a lot of good things you can understand with their beliefs and everything with that program, very gracious and accommodating people there at that thing. So if you get a chance, please try to go to that next year. Library Activities. Cottage Core Coloring for Adults, Thursday, February 24, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at the Crawford Meeting Room. Painting Miniatures for Teens and Adults, Saturday, February 26, from 11:00 to 2:00. Registration is required at the Hive Makerspace. And another popular course, Gardening for Pollinators for Adults, Saturday, February 26, from 1:00 to 2:00 PM. No registration required at the Crawford Meeting Room.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Troyer?
I will follow up with what Councilmember Meredith said about the Chin Festival on Saturday, or, yeah, Sunday, whatever. Yeah, whenever it was. It was a tremendous event. There was also a Chin Festival, High School Festival, on Thursday night at Stuver Auditorium, which I attended, and some of the same things were done there. But the dancing and the, and as Mr. Meredith said, it was mostly in Chin. And so luckily, we did have a translator with us who let us know what some of the things, what some things were going on. And if you're interested in seeing some dances and music, if you look at my Facebook page, I did post some videos there. So if you're interested in that. Now, to the Lewisville Grand Theater. Performances, the Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat will be presented by Christie New Theater of DFE. That's February 25 through the 27, with two shows on the 26. Black Box Songwriter Series with Jason Edie, presented by the city of Lewisville, will be on March 11. As always, the Acoustic Jam, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville on Friday nights, 6 to 9. Activities, right now, the Lewisville Achievement Fair was held on Sunday, Sunday evening, right. Yeah, Sunday evening with the Lewisville Achievement Fair was held in the Grand, and the exhibits that were set up there, students did art exhibits celebrating people of colors' achievements, historical achievements. And those, those presentations are available in the, in the theater through February 26. Then art exhibitions going on, the LISD High School Art Exhibition, presented by the LISD, through February 26, and the Middle School Art Exhibition through March, March 4 through 19. And that is all.
Thank you, sir. City Secretary, do we have anything else?
No, sir.
How about the development side of the world?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
No report?
No report, Mayor.
No report.
We got a lake level?
Lake level report.
Are we going to take bets?
We're at 520.04 feet, and about 90, just shy of 91% capacity in the lake.
It's not bad.
Getting dry out there.
It could be drier.
Is that just a "hi" or was that an announcement? Hey! Awesome. Nothing, sir? Councilmember Green?
So I just wanted to real quickly mention, so last Thursday night, I went to the Youth Action Council, who are meeting over at the Grand Theater, painting their, what are we calling them? Pantry boxes? Food pantry? Yeah, the food pantry boxes that are going to be going at Wayne Frady, and where's the other location? Central, okay. So that was a really, I got to, I didn't get to stay for all the painting, but I did get to stay for the discussion about the class project as a whole, and what kind of food they were going to put in, and what kind of, how they were going to do their food drive, and advertise it, and all the things they were going to do. And I was just incredibly impressed with the group of students that we have from all over Lewisville ISD attending this course. They are amazing, and they're excited about getting involved and doing things in their community. And I'm just really excited about our future, just sitting there listening to them talk. And so I just wanted to say thank you to staff for taking, you know, the above and your extra time to come and do this with these students, Matt and James, and there were several other people there representing the city, that are really taking their time to help these kids really grow into their potential. And which class is this? Is it five? How many classes have we had? Do we know? Fourth or fifth, okay. So this is a great program, and I just wanted to say thank you, sixth? Sixth, okay. So I just wanted to say thank you to staff for keeping that going. That's a really amazing program. I also just wanted to mention a couple of, we have a couple of festivals coming up. The first one is the St. Patty's Day Festival. I'm not quite sure what we're calling it, but that's going to be on March 12. I know that's the Saturday before spring break, but hopefully we'll still, you know, maybe you're not gone on your vacation yet, so you can come on out and have a good time. It's free. It's at Wayne Ferguson Plaza from 1:00 to 8:00. And then we have the Color Palooza coming up, April 23. And I cannot wait to see the yarn bombing this year, because it was awesome last year. And that, that event was, there were so many people there last year. It was really, really refreshing, because it was like the first thing coming out of the pandemic, and all the people there. And it was a really, really great event last year, and I'm really looking forward to it this year. I'm done.
Councilmember Jones?
All right. It's been a very busy February, Great Black History Month. We had a ton of events that went on. Also this week, I attended the Chin Festival at the high school as well, which is really cool. It was run by the students with the assistance of the LHS staff. Ms. Bowery was our emcee, and she did a fantastic job. You got to see, there was a lot of singing, a lot of traditional dances. There was a show, a fashion show, which was pretty cool. And so that was a lot of fun to learn about our Chin residents and to get to know them a little better. We also attended the Lewisville Achievement Fair, which is another Black History Month affair, which looked at the achievements of people in history and put on by the students. And they had a lot of nice projects. And as Councilman Troyer told us, that's going on to the 26, as well as the MLK essay. And our show will be going on, I guess, for a few more days, too. So the next time we see you, it'll be Women's History Month. So I look forward to seeing the great women in history in Lewisville. That's all I have.
Wow, I didn't prepare, because I thought you would take all my stuff. Wow, I didn't prepare, because I thought you would take all my stuff. If you haven't had a chance to go to the Grand Theater, look at the exhibits that the students worked hard on, but I want you to look at the high school art exhibit. There's absolutely some phenomenal talent in Lewisville Independent School District. There's some stuff there I would literally buy and put on my wall. It is that good. So, take a stroll, get out of the office for 10 minutes, it's not gonna, and relax and go just have a wow moment, because there are really some good stuff over there. That's all I have to say.
City Manager?
Mayor, just wanted to remind everyone, I'm sure you have it on your calendar. We have our retreat coming on from the 3rd to the 5th. So, staff is busy working around the clock to prepare those presentations for you guys. And also, we have found a way to get March 3rd to start at 10 a.m., so you'll have a late start, so that'll be all fine. We'll update your invites so that you know that on your calendars.
So, wanted to circle back on a couple of quick things. One of the great things that I love about Color Palooza, and it kind of ties into our Chin students, is that Color Palooza, a big component of it, is not just because it's spring and color, but it's because it's celebrating the diversity of Lewisville. Our Chin Burmese population is, my understanding, is the third-largest demographic in Lewisville now. Those kids brought in a quarter of a million dollars in college scholarships that was announced this past week. So, it's amazing to see what happens when we celebrate and encourage folks here in Lewisville, especially when you look at many of those students, and they've been in the United States for less than five years. You know, the history of the Burmese Chin is staggering. If you get a chance, do a little reading on it. It's amazing what these kids have overcome, their families have overcome. And I congratulate Lewisville on the amount of good old Texas hospitality that we've been able to provide over the years, and I hope we continue that for all of our populations, because we're better, we're better for the differences that we have. It's a pretty amazing thing. Councilmember Jones, I don't know, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm going to anyway. I believe we have a possible community cleanup for the Fox Hembry Church coming up, or the cemetery coming up?
That is correct. I do not know the date off the top of my head. I believe it's the 2nd Saturday in March, but...
We have the date right here. Yeah, I can't, I don't have my phone.
Okay. And it's my apologies for not, but I just, it's, but go ahead and hop onto social media. I'm sure we'll put something up on the city website, and look with your council members when that date comes around. But it's in the next couple of weeks. But again, it'll be like the cleanup that was done on Martin Luther King Day for another one of our older cemeteries that just needs a little extra love.
Sir, it is March 19.
March 19, okay. So, if you're looking for an opportunity to do service, you need service hours. I know a bunch of high school kids are starting to look at the end of the year and trying to get their service hours buttoned down. This may be a great opportunity for that. All right, with that, we're gonna move into item H, closed session, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551-071, consultation with attorney, legal issues regarding the TIVA statewide opioid settlement and consent judgment, and EndoPAR, Texas statewide opioid settlement agreement and settlement term sheet. Item 2, Section 551-071, consultation with attorney, legal issues related to Chapter 7, Article 11, sexually oriented businesses of the Lewisville City Code, Section 551.072, real estate property acquisition, Section 551.087, economic development deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We will convene into closed session. All right, let's resume back into regular session. Counsel, is there any action to be taken?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.